Before we turn it over to the public and stuff, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to our city administrator, Tony Graff, to kinda let him put everything together and go through the whole details and why we're here tonight. Okay?
Alright. Thank you.
I'll stand up for you guys. Gary, this is about the -- IDOT has asked the city to take one more look in regards to their preferred route, which the preferred route is the 3F, which is what you saw in the paper and what you see tonight is there's a conceptual drawing of what Route 3F is, which is going north of Deer Creek and north of the Foxtail Commons and across the river. And then it cuts off two homes on Woodhills Road and goes through Bobcat Field and heads straight west. And ultimately, there'll be 11 homes on that route, 3F. That's their preferred route. The alternate route is the 3B. The 3B is, it avoids the Bobcat Field and those two homes on Woodhills Road, but then ultimately will take out all the Foxtail Commons homes and then it takes out Deer Creek on the north side there, which comes up to a total of 26 more homes. So it'll be 37 homes that would be taken out with 3B versus 11 homes on 3F. So they're getting ready to finish up their final environmentals. And only concerned that we expressed them from a lot of comments that came in through the comment period for the last 60 days. There's been sort of mixed comments that have come in that if it's gonna come through those subdivisions, you might as well just take our homes, were some of the comments that they got. We've had a couple of meetings. There's been one out in Miss Thompson's garage, it was out in the summer, fall time if it was, when we were -- and IDOT out there talking about those preferred routes, they had two or three of them at that point. Land acquisition was there, talking about how they would take the land, how they reinvest. But at this point, with that preferred route being 3F, they wanted one more comment back from the city council. And the city council really felt strongly that they needed to do another public meeting to get input for the final time in regards to those two, that's the last two routes for the Iliana. Once they get through the preferred route, they will submit their final document then and it'll be in final review. Final review then will be the two states and the federal government, what they call the record decision. So for the Bobcat Field to be taken, they will relocate it. We even have a lease agreement signed with the Bobcat Association right now that if that field was ever taken for certain purposes, for public safety or public need, the city would relocate, find a location for their football field. So we met with Bobcat, we have a couple of spots we haven't locked in yet where we can relocate them, but there isn't, as we all know, enough land in the area that we can relocate the field. And actually, we're looking to relocate it and actually expand it a little bit so that we could add more fields and possibly even some more of the recreational activity for our community that we would ask IDOT to pay for, for the community impact of Bobcat Field. So I know we have a lot of people from Deer Creek and Foxtail Commons. Council is just really wanting to see if there's any consensus, which is kinda hard to get a consensus probably, but you know, that's what's on the table. 3B is taking all of Foxtail and Deer Creek and 3F is saving Foxtail and Deer Creek except for the one unit. There's a four unit that's on the north side. That's in both scenarios that one's taken. I mean, there'll be a take as they go through. The conceptual drawing that they did, some of you have, as you can tell, there's a lot of trees, a lot of bushes, a lot of things that aren't there now. That's what their landscape and for the buffer, they would put all that in similar to that. So gave us, gives you a little bit of a view of what it would look like for the 3F. We didn't have to do one with 3B because 3B is just basically, you know, taking the whole subdivision, what that would look like. So I think that gives you a little bit of an idea of how close it's gonna be to your homes, but it's, as we go through, you know, we'll take some comments in regards to it. That's where we're at. And anybody's got any questions, you know, I can only answer from what I know because IDOT's not here. And we purposely, they asked, purposely said it's really a local issue right now. I think everybody's heard from IDOT enough that they didn't need to have those gentlemen here.
Do I remind you of Foxtail Commons? How can they pursue this road when they have two lawsuits in?
Well, that's a good question. The only thing I can tell you is it's a process. The lawsuits go on in concurrent with what the process is. So they're continuing with the process until someone tells them to stop. So I mean, we could sit back and think the lawsuits might have an impact, they might, it might make them do certain things different, but what we have in front of us tonight is really the two routes. So the lawsuits are coming and there could be, this could all be moot, possibly if those lawsuits are successful and the courts say they can't fill it and they have to start from, you know, they have to go back to the drawing board.
Barbara Russell, Foxtail Commons, when are we gonna get a final answer? The latest we heard was the end of May. We're all living in limbo?
Yes. Well, the final answer, they were trying to get to the end of May and then they ran into some environmental questions that they had to get responses back to a couple of the environmental agencies. Now, the Army Corps was one of them, another one was the EPA, and then this issue too. Because Bobcat is a public, it is public property, so they do need, we're the owners of it, as the city is, not me, the council. The people are the owners of Bobcat Field, so they need to get some feedback. Well, they got a lot of, they got feedback a lot about Foxtail Commons and Deer Creek. They got very few comments on Bobcat Field in their written comments. They got some verbal comments. So at this point, May 22nd, if we have our city council meeting, we'll be able to give them some direction. And there's three things the council's gonna act on, they'll take a vote on. One will be, there is no opinion, it's neutral. You know, we'll let the process determine the route. We'll let the engineers figure that out. Or the city council will give a recommendation that 3F is okay or 3B is okay. And then that'll get forward to IDOT the next day after they make their action on Tuesday. So they're saying it's about six weeks behind us, so if they're at the end of May, it'll probably be July.
Jesus, okay.
Yes?
Ron, there's a question. Has the city done any impact studies as far as the difference between the two of how much tax dollars is gonna be lost if you took one or the other? What's gonna impact taxes? To pick up that difference?
Well, don't need to do a quick back of the envelope calculation with 26 homes and the average taxes on those 26 homes for the city's portion is probably in the range of, oh, I'd put about $10,000 a year in property taxes that we would receive. Now, school district's different, you know, I mean, and you add up all the other taxes.
Yeah.
But that's a point, you know, if those homes are taken, it does become public land, so it's not taxable. Now, what the council has asked, the Iliana, is what they call a fee in lieu of losing all the tax dollars for all the property that they're taking. The council's resolution has asked for a fee to get put onto the toll to replace that they lost taxes. They haven't responded to that, but the council did recognize that we would lose some property taxes, so we did ask if we could have a small fee as part of the tollway fee. We'll see what happens. We'll continue to act by.
Pat Hurley, I live in Deer Creek, the state. So this is basically what we're here for today, is to decide, not to decide, us to decide, but just to tell you what we think of, we want us to keep the houses there or get rid of the houses there, you know?
Yes. I think the council's...
That's pretty much what we're here for, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know whether it's gonna happen or not. If it doesn't happen, it's gonna, there's a new point anyway, but we're just here today to decide which one we want, B or F, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
And I'd say, we can do a raise of hands if you wanted to, or you know your council, maybe you can talk to him privately, you know, from now to Tuesday, they'll take a vote. But yeah, the city council really wanna get some input from their constituents. Yes?
Hi. Sharon Paytas at Deer Creek. If they don't take our house and we have the highway going through there, are we able to get a lawyer and sue for quality of life? I mean, has anybody ever done that? Does anybody know anything about that?
Well, I can tell you from my experience, I've been involved in a couple of other expressway projects, quality of life is very vague. Normally, what the courts will look for is, they need to get some documentation. Yes, you can sue for the impact of the expressway in regards to your property values, if you got documentation, you know, an impact to your property values or an impact in any type of your own environment, which environment could be anywhere from health to, you know, your trees, your bushes, things like that.
Sure. I mean, we've just been there, you know, a couple of years, a few years now, and the reason we moved there from Schaumburg was to get away from everything. And now I'm gonna have a highway going through.
Mike Bailey, Foxtail Commons. I have one of those four houses in the back that's gonna get the ax, no matter which way it goes. I'm not sure you're putting out the right information. I'm probably one of the few that received the letter so far that said, "Probably my house ain't good." Last time I saw a chart, they showed houses on Jennifer Lane there, one side would be fine and the other one, all uphill. So don't be putting out information if you don't know it's correct or not.
Well, the information I'm giving tonight is correct. It's from IDOT. I didn't make this information.
IDOT from IDOT too. Okay? Just a reminder.
Here, there's four units in Foxtail that they're taking, yes.
That's right.
Yes. The rest is up for discussion.
Pardon?
The rest of the homes are up for discussion tonight with the two routes.
Correct.
So I don't know what misinformation you're talking about.
No. Well, you're saying they're taking all of Foxtail Commons, you're not gonna do it. The next 3B is a possibility.
It's a possibility.
Yes. Okay. Secondly, I'm totally against it. I bought that house out there to retire and die in, and I'm not being given any leeway on it or not, not good a choice. Secondly, it's gonna cost tax pillars over a billion dollars in taxes yearly to build this thing. It's also being built by outside people. I don't know what you think about how many Wilmington residents or rural county residents are gonna get involved, but I guarantee you, they're gonna be bringing in their own people. Okay? So I'm totally against it. It's not a good deal for anyone involved. As far as another bridge across the Kankakee River, that's just what you need, especially when there's a good freeze up again. What are you gonna do? Bring a hovercar out, start in between the bridges and work on it? I don't think so. Thank you.
Jan Levin, Foxtail Commons. I'm interested in the, in your count, because with his unit of four gone, that leaves 30 units in Foxtail. So I'm a rate criminal of 30, 26, including between Deer Creek and Foxtail, 26?
That's what IDOT knows.
The difference between 11...
Between 11, the 11 counts his four already, since you're 30, I think, but yeah, that's the numbers they gave us, was 37, 37 and the F, the B, 3B, so.
Cause total at Foxtail's 34.
Okay.
And if they're already taking, if they're taking four, that leaves 30.
See, if 3F go take alone, and if it's 3B, it'll be a total of 37, so 37 minus 3, 11.
And you know what? Like I say, there could be a few more, more homes when you add up all of them, and maybe they, you know, give us the right numbers. I think you're, yeah, if there's 30 there, if there's about eight or nine in Deer Creek under there, that would be over 37 right there, so.
If the council's gonna take tonight, the comments here are gonna be yours, because there's a lot of people here that aren't here, you know, just doing it.
They're not really, the council's not here for a count. They're here to just get input and feedback. This isn't like a formal, you know, yes or no, maybe. They have to make a vote on Tuesday, and what they wanted to do is try to get some feedback, you know, and a lot of that can be done, is one-on-one with your councilman, or if you wanna step up, they're here for tonight. If everyone wants to step up and say yes or no, or neutral, they're open to that too.
Pat Hurley again. Just one more question. I know you were talking about the taxes that if you lose these houses, if you don't lose these houses, then you have to stay there. Is there gonna be any devalue of our houses on how much taxes we're paying? Cause I'm paying, I'm paying a lot of taxes, you know what I mean? I live next to that, I don't really think that's a fair...
And her bill is gonna sound.
Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna go down or anything else, you know, so that's a little something to think about too, you know, I know everybody's got different opinions on it.
Oh, God, yes.
Everybody has different opinion about it. My opinion is it's terrible. And if they're kind of neutral, I'd like them to take my house. That's just my opinion, I like to express my opinion, my wife's opinion, my neighbor's opinion, they ain't here today, but, cause they had to work to, you know, pay for the house that they got. But that's just my opinion, I just wanted to express to you and to you guys up there that that's my opinion, you know?
And I agree with you, Pam. My name's Joe Wheeler, I'm in Deer Creek as well. If my house were taken, I don't wanna live next to the highway.
And that's for sure, I'm not moving out of Wilmington either. If they take my house, we're still gonna move out of Wilmington, so, you know? Thank you.
The answer to the question about the lawyer, we talked to our lawyer regarding being able to sue for quality of life, the answer is you can sue for whatever you'd like, but getting it is not. And so...
Go to the back.
My house is gone regardless of which route, but I'm curious...
Can you give a name for the...
Oh, sorry. Don Mauffer, Kankakee River Drive. I'm just curious why each route affects both sides of the river at the same time? They're so far apart. Why wouldn't each route be dealt with separately?
I'm gonna understand you, separately in which way?
Why does it have to take all the houses at Foxtail Commons and not the Bobcat Field or vice versa? Why can't... Somebody help me out of here.
The engineers tried their best to find the route where it could fit, where the environmentals were gonna allow them to fit, because there is some environmental issues up on Woodhills Road. They have a wetland that the Army Corps identified that they cannot take or go through, so they had to move the route a little bit different. So that moved the route actually closer to Woodhills Road. Well, when that, when that happened, then they had to reconfigure how they're gonna cross Kankakee River. And then when they tried to remove, tried to figure that out, they've also ran into environmental with the river, so they had to realign the bridge. So every little impact of the environmental, that's the stage there is, the environmental stage, it then changed the alignment. And then the alignment ended up going further to the north, and that's where 3F became the more preferred route. When they came through the first time with the 3B coming through the two subdivisions, they really, that still could work environmentally, but then they started looking at the amount of homes they had to take. And under their, what IDOT has stated a lot of times in all these hearings, is they're trying to take less homes, displacing people out of their homes. So that's why they really looked at the preferred route of 3F, because they do take less homes.
So the answer is the bridge is gonna be in two different places for each of these routes?
Generally, a little, just a little dynamic change. The bridge generally, the footprint will be just about the same, just the angle of how it goes across the river.
But still so far away, it's hard to believe that it's a...
As they hook in, yeah, I agree, it does look like as they hook around and come from the north and then come up this way, how they're gonna make the curve in, like engineers generally, where the bridge is going, that's about the best location environmentally as they go across the river.
It don't seem to be that you have to have one or the other.
Well, like I say, I think, I think the 3F came out because they wanted to avoid the homes.
No. I'm just saying the people on the, one side of the river should be able to decide which way they want it, and the people on the south side of the river should decide which way they want it to go.
Well, it is, I would agree, it would be...
East and west.
Yeah. But I think the, when the environmentals come into it, as we all work through the Iliana, there's been a lot of environmental concerns of a lot of, you know, properties up and down the Iliana. So we're down to the final on the Wilmington side. I don't know if I really answered your question, but the engineers...
Yeah, Keith Scory, I live on Woodhills Road. You gave specific numbers, 11 homes, 26 homes. Do you guys know exactly which homes those are?
I can look, I mean, on the website, they have the routes, which homes they are.
Yeah, and I've been on the website many times, and it shows it going like right through your backyard. Does that mean they're taking your home or they're not? Do you know exactly which 11 homes are on the west side of...
No. I don't know the exact addresses, but you know, you can contact them with your address...
I've done it 20 times, I can't know what's got any answers.
Have they said yes or no?
No, they haven't, and I haven't gotten those letters.
We'll get a defined list of what those homes are within city Wilmington. I'll get ahold of, I bet they'll hold secretary tomorrow, whatever. We'll get a defined list in regards to the city boundaries, on where those homes are and what the addresses are, and we'll try to get them out, especially to those that are impacted or potentially impacted, we'll get those out. You shouldn't have to call them for a time. So we'll get those.
I was looking at one of their drawings, it was an engineering, engineering drawing, and it's got at the very bottom, and I'm Kurt Fox from, my mom's place is on 265 Jennifer Lane, but she's no longer around, so it's me now. It's a 70 mile an hour road. You gotta take that into consideration, if you wanna live there, it's 70 mile an hour, and you know they're not gonna be going 70. And it's gonna be semis, all they got on the drawing are cars. They should've thrown in about 40 semis in that same drawing. So take that into consideration if you wanna stay here.
Another thing with them leaving our homes, about nine years ago, we bought my house, I paid $174. My real estate value, market value is $139 right now, so I lost $31,000 on it. They put in, they put in that toll road close to us, we're gonna lose at least another $20,000, $25,000. And I'm gonna be selling it and living in a box, you know? It's just, so, yeah. And the noise, I thought it was two lane, it's a four lane. We're gonna have noise pollution, we're gonna have the air, air pollution, and it's gonna be a bitch to live there.
Ma'am, Jill, did you hear her name?
No.
Ma'am, your name over there.
Barbara Russell, Foxtail. Barbara Russell, thank you. Thank you, still for letting me.
So Barbara, are you saying to the council...
Oh, take it.
Take it.
Because whatever market value they give you is gonna be more than if you ask if that toll rate goes in. And then again, how long is it gonna take? And what end are they gonna start? You know, I'm 67 years old, I do not want to live and die here, okay? It's a beautiful town, I wanna move on, but now I'm stuck here because of a tollway and politicians, and I'm not voting for any of the suckers. None of them. They're all liars.
I've got a bridge that I'll look at, trust me, I'm like, there's no problem. But what I'm getting at is, Marty and council, the last meeting I was at, there wasn't, and I've been to just about every one, there wasn't one politician at the last meeting. Not one. I don't know if any of you guys know this, okay? What I'm gonna get at, and I'm gonna beat a dead horse, I wanna go back to New River Road, alright, and I know the God almighty prairies out there. But has any one of you ever got ahold of Dick Durbin? And... Huh? And that was it?
Silence.
Well, why?
I have no idea.
Have you got ahold of Tribune, sometimes, any of these newspapers? Because what's going on? This isn't just us, this is the taxpayers of Illinois who are gonna be paying big bucks. Not just for the roads, it's supposed to be like Mr. Berry said, an outside source, and that's not gonna happen, because when they default, it's gonna go right back to the taxpayers. There's gonna be, our new road's gonna have to be redone, all the interchanges around here are gonna have to be redone. This is big dollars. Taxpayers in Illinois do not know this, alright? And I know it's like, the prairie is like it's a done deal, not necessarily. You take half of that money of the bridge and you dangle it in front of the prairie people, $45 million, $50 million, you can get something done. But look, Almighty Dick Durbin and the rest of the politicians that never show up, and I'm talking our local politicians, one of them, I was reading in the Prairie Magazine that he said there's some real smart people working on this road. Well, there's some real smart people right here against this road. But nobody's said anything to these politicians, they're a bunch of cowards. And like I said, if you guys go back on the records, at the last meeting, there was not one person there, and very few at the other meetings.
From the county and state level?
What's that?
From the county and state level, you're correct. From the county level and the state level and that, yeah.
Yeah, there's no way there, and we gotta get to the federal level, and there should be enough pressure, people should write letters and get to this guy, because he's the guy in 1996 that's signed that piece of paper that said nothing could go through the prairie. The prairie's nothing, I love the prairie, don't get me wrong, I like what they did with it. It's nothing short of a super fund site, and it shouldn't be followed through on this. It shouldn't be just let go and take no for an answer. I just wanted to make that statement.
But she hasn't done anything about it.
Peter Yanis first.
Me. I said Pam Zechman was at the last meeting. I called NBC News and I called CBS, and Pam Zechman did come out, but nothing has come coming.
Well, I think, I think the two environmental lawsuits that are filed are the ones that are speaking.
I think the people that are complaining about the airplanes going over their head over O'Hare, getting more attention than they deserve.
And because they keep complaining about it.
Yeah, that's right. Cause we're quiet. Jackie Denalich is still in Foxtail Commons. For now. Because that's why I plan to die. I've got the perfect house and I'm not moving. So whatever it takes to get me out, y'all will be put to the test, I'm just saying that. Now, we had a meeting here in December, oh, that was winter, of course, that's a lot, could be a lot of time. And Tony was there, Mayor was there, I don't...
Two of them were there.
Huh?
Two of them were there as well.
Yes. We filled out forms with our opinions at the time, and the no build was still one of the options. And I'm assuming, please say you sent those in.
Yeah.
Okay. So they're saying they haven't heard from us?
No, they've heard...
We sent those.
They've heard, like I said, they've heard mixed comments in regards to taking homes and not taking homes. So, and like I say, their process is more engineering, you know, they guess they hear from the comments, and they modified some things to try to accommodate some of the environmentals. But, you know, at this point, like I say, they're, they're, they asked the city council to come up with a vote in regards to which one, 3F or 3B, or neutral.
You can't say no build.
The no build is always on the table, yeah. I mean, it's...
They're pushing that.
It means like no build anything.
Exactly.
We went that way from the beginning.
I have a very first resolution.
Put down your hands.
It's, this is, this is a machine, this is a state, federal machine.
I think people are gonna find out a little bit more about this so-called quick take, which they pulled when they started this Illinois Toyota Center from the south there. Chicago's gonna start coming out and extending their Redline Altrail, and they're looking at 150 houses that they're gonna take through there. More people will start finding out what this law was that they passed that was kinda quietly snuck through. Then they'll probably hear more, more noise going on about that quick take and so forth, but right now, you haven't heard anything about it.
Pam Munson from the Free Press. I'd like to address that comment about O'Hare Airport and all of those people who are getting so much attention. How many people in here don't have an interest in property in the path of this highway? All of you, all of you either live near it or will lose your home to it, but where is the rest of your community? That, in my opinion, is why the people up by O'Hare Airport get so much attention. The only people here who are saying no Iliana, robbing enough for IDOT to hear it, is because, is a very small number of people, and it's this group of people right here.
Vince Larson, I'm at 1029 Woodhills Road through Iliana Land grab ends at the west side of my driveway. I live next to Paul Gagnell. The second part is, is like, is anyone else getting calls from that they want, whatever they want?
They wanna praise the house.
We've gotten calls already to praise the property. We have about two acres that'll be taken, and the house will be saved, supposedly. I'd rather lose the house, but...
And the people wanna come out either Tuesday or Thursday or next week.
T Engineering is the company.
IDOT did, IDOT did say that they are starting to praise, you know, asking for, you know, voluntarily asking to come on and praise property on the, on the routes. We do know that you're not the only one that's been contacted, there's been others that have called us to verify. And, so they are making contacts.
Aren't you better off having your lawyers subbeat Drizzle than you are getting IDOT subbeat Drizzle?
It's a, it's a process.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Dr. Munson, there you are.
Mike Beale again. To answer your question, you do not have to allow them on your property for assessment. You don't have to do it at all. Also, I'm part of an organization that joined together and banded together, mostly to Piatau and the farms over there, it's called No Iliana for Us. Fifty dollars a year membership, and, uh, whatever you wanna donate to help with the lawyers. Right now, the lawyers together are getting together and, uh, see how they're gonna work this. But we're gonna join in on a joint, uh, what do you call it? File against it. So that's another option you have, and it's pretty much the same way. People aren't interested, uh, doesn't affect them. So, we're the ones that told the, the board, we're gonna have to do something one way or the other. So the best thing to do is start squawking to Heaven High.
Way in the back, you again.
Hi, uh, Findy Hill, I'm actually in Simmerton. Um, I've been campaigning, um, against the Iliana since I found out it was coming, four months after I bought my house. Um, I'd like to further what Ms. Munson said about banding together. I literally went door to door in Simmerton, knocking on every door. I went up and down Old Chicago Road, and, um, the next road, which I'm forgetting the name of now, um, and passed out flyers and knocked on doors and introduced myself. And the turnout for that first meeting at one fifty was massive, and was a surprise to them. And I, I think that has something to do, because they didn't know about it before I went and told them. So, you need to band together and make noise. If you look at the maps from a year ago, within six weeks of me doing that, of me and my neighbor, Simmerton was matched out. It was literally like a little up and down, and Simmerton was matched out, because they had over a hundred people at one time coming to them and saying, hey. So now we can pay our court, or we can do whatever we wanna do to our home, and not worry about having to lose all the work we've put into it. So, if you're gonna make noise, you gotta do it together, is, is what I wanted to further with Ms. Munson said. Second of all, um, I wanted to speak to quality of life. I'm literally, I mean, it's gonna be less than a football field away from my house. I'm keeping my house, but it's gonna be less than a football field away from my house. My kids are gonna be having headlights in their windows. I'm with you guys. Even though I'm not in Foxtail, I'm not in Deer, I'm with you, I'm right there with you. I approached them about soundproof and quality of life and, and air quality. And their response to me was that, Simmerton, the difference is less, is less than what is required by federal law for us to qualify for burns and treatments for S.A.T. Now, mind you, they tested another two hundred feet past my house. And if they had tested next to the highway where we're, where we are, we probably would have met the qualifications. So my point is, is if you wanna stay there and this highway's coming, be aware of what you're gonna get. You're gonna get highway, you're gonna get noise, you're gonna get pollution. I also have well water. My, my water was contaminated. So, um, I'm with you guys, I'm trying, I tried, and just something, I'm, further, they're gonna devalue property. So, I'm probably a bad view of. Sell now, if you're, if you're gonna lose it, and you wanna sell now, then you'll get more for it now than you would in three years. Right. Or, or...
And then you gotta sit.
I, I was, I bought my house four months before this came out, I was a little mad. So, um, just a little something for you, they're, they're gonna say you don't meet disqualifications, but they're not gonna test where they ought to test. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna make any noise, you gotta band together, you gotta find somebody who can lead you, and, and do, and do it as a, as a community, do it as one. That's all I wanted to say. Sorry.
My name's Carrie Michaels, I live at four thirty eight Wall Dash, two blocks from St. Rose. Obviously, my house is gonna be safe. I'm here because I know people that live in Foxtail and live in the other subdivision. I have friends from St. Rose that are affected, I have personal friends affected. And our motto is, we are Wilmington, we are one. And I care about everybody in this town, just not where I live at. And that's why I'm at this meeting. I've been praying for you guys for months, and I don't know what's gonna happen with saying God answers prayers, but I don't know how much control he's got over the dumb government, but I'm here to support you guys any way I can.
Thank you, and he still does.
Any other comments?
Is there a way we can really stop this at this stage?
I, I, I think, I, I would tell you, there were people up at the Prairie Parkway, when I was going through up in King County and, and Kemble County, that they were at a point where they had, they actually recorded a corridor, uh, Prairie Parkway that's being built today. So, there, there is evidence that even though IDOT and everybody thought that was the best route, and they actually recorded a center line, so if your property was in that recording, if you tried to sell your house, you know, it, it came up on your title, of a future highway. And they actually had funding of two hundred and, uh, like, thirty million dollars from, uh, the village speaker that lived up there. But, there was a lot of, uh, people that banded together, and they kept asking the questions. And ultimately, it failed. You know, it didn't meet the test, and so then, they probably, you know, put it up on the shelf. And now the money's being used up in Morris and other locations on Route Forty-seven for the improvements. Which is what most of the people in that area kept saying. Improve Route Forty-seven first, then see if that is relieving a lot of the traffic, then maybe look at another highway. And that did come from people banning the cars.
Piatau Airport, how long is that thing now?
Well, I, I...
Twenty years.
It's twenty years. That's another topic for another day.
For another day, but I mean, it's gonna happen.
It does. I mean, it's slowed down, it's not built yet. It's not even approved yet, so...
Those people wanting to go in Iliana, they go over to this plain river. And get rid of the traffic jams.
Any other comments?
Yes, I got one. Would you, Hungry and Bessin, would you want truck traffic running through your living room? Yes or no?
Um, I would want any traffic running through my living room, because I like watching the ox.
Yeah, I agree with that, okay?
Five o'clock coming.
No Iliana. The CMAT Board voted ten to four that the Iliana does not comply with the go-to two thousand forty plan. Therefore, the Iliana is operating illegally. A second lawsuit has been filed against IDOT and Schneider, I guess that's how you pronounce it. CMAT and MPO, claiming the Iliana violated the Illinois Regional Planning Act. And requires additional... And requires approval by the CMAT Board. The lawsuit seeks a court order declaring that the MPO committee, quote, "was unauthorized, violated the Illinois Regional Planning Act, and is without legal effect," and that IDOT lacks legal authority to spend public funds and continue to work on the project. Therefore, with all that against the Iliana, this project is doomed. Your Iliana is dead. Absolutely not going anywhere. No Iliana, no Iliana for us. All right.
One other point that nobody ever talks about, and really isn't germane to this meeting tonight, in a sense, but nobody ever talks about Ridgeport. If you notice your maps, Iliana does not end at one twenty-nine, it ends in Ridgeport.
You're absolutely right.
And they are a humongous company. How much are they driving IDOT to do this? I'd love to know the answer to that question.
They're, they're... They're reaching out here? They're gonna, maybe... They donated two million dollars to that.
Uh, Ridgeport Logistics is in the city of Wilmington. We do support that, you know, Ridgeport needs traffic alternatives. And, as part of the planning process, we do it, we did encourage the Iliana to, to try to get a direct access into Ridgeport, so the trucks do not come into the city of Wilmington, and can get on the expressway directly from that business park. That's because city council's position, and a lot of the people in this community, is keep the trucks out of our local roads. So we did encourage IDOT to work with Ridgeport to get that, to do that. You know, that's, that's an open statement, and we've made, as a city, numerous times for planning purposes, so... I don't know any other way to say it, but that's the honest way, we've been, we've been supporting that. If it's gonna come, we want the best solution to keep the trucks off the, off our local highways.
And Delta State Wilmington at the same time.
It's, uh, it's a project that's here, they've spent over thirty million dollars so far on all the infrastructure, to their extent, we're good on community. It's like, you know, everybody else is a property owner here. You know, we, we support their initiative to, to build out. Any other comments?
Yeah. Pat, Pat Hurley again. I, I understand everybody's concern, that I just, I know what this meeting was for, it was to see if we want F or B. I just wanted you to know, in the reiterating, that this meeting, I do want my house to be gone if they're coming, if they're actually gonna do it. You gotta, gotta go to these people, and they said, yeah, do you want F or do you want B? My option is, take my house. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, if that's what this meeting's for, I want you to know that Pat Hurley wants his house gone, if this is what is happening. Thank you.
How's it doing, Wheeler, Deer Creek? I was wondering if it would be, assuming that the highway is going to come, if we could take a hand count as to who would want their house to be taken and who would not? So at least that way, leaders would have an idea of where we all stand.
Three B, three F? Three F?
You guys, they're, they're, they're sort of having discussions, including you guys right now, that's all. I'm asking, speak up, speak up, Martin.
What I'm, what I'm concerned is with the council, I'm just telling you, there's maybe some people out there that may be reluctant to do that publicly.
No, no, I don't think so.
I'm just saying, there may be some.
I think we're ready.
There may be some that aren't, and I'm just, you know...
That's what we're saying. If ours is ready, don't have to vote. Right, exactly.
Well, let's do it this way, we'll do it by raise a hand, but I still encourage those to talk to your aldermen, and talk to me, um, you know, individually. We won't base it, that, these guys will, they'll say, we ain't gonna base it just on, on the amount of hands that go up, and you're not a hand, and don't vote. They're gonna expect, and they're gonna, they want you guys to talk to, especially the aldermen that represent.
Are you gonna have time to talk to all of us tonight, then?
I'll be here for a while, if I go out.
All of you?
Anybody that wants to talk to me, I'll be here.
All of you?
I don't know if anybody is going anywhere.
Council, you're, okay, if three B is, is, we all know, three B is, we all know is the one that takes the homes, and Deer Creek, and, and Foxtail. So, if you live in Deer Creek and Foxtail, what the council's asking is, if you really wanna get the property owners that live in those subdivisions. You live in, live there, how many are in favor of Route three B, which is the one that takes the homes? Again, three B, let's have a raise of hands. I don't know if the council members saw.
I'm voting for my husband.
I counted fifteen. Seventeen, you got? So seventeen, eighteen. Okay. Three F?
Four, three F.
Four, four, this is four, three F.
I have two homes in Spanish, I have two houses, but I don't know.
I'll come over with a weapon.
That's right. Raise your hands high so we can see them. Thank you.
Working. We can see it better, guys. Total people are here.
We'll, we'll use this base to base, and then we'll wait for discussions with the aldermen as well.
While you guys... There's thirty, thirty-two total. And there's three homes and Foxtail homes.
Is there anybody here from O'Brien subdivision? Hey, you, you, you all understand that three B moves it closer to our subdivision? When, three F, three F moves it farther away, three B puts it right up next to our subdivision. There's something to consider.
They can vote, no?
Yeah, it does.
It does, it should tell us.
There was eighteen and fourteen, I believe. Unofficial. Any other, any other comments here, aldermen? I mean, they're gonna be here for a while. The other guys can talk to all of you from there, that's a lot.
Can I, can I ask a question? You folks all know these routes, right?
Right.
So how many people on the east side of the river will the, uh, three F affect? Do you know how far that's out, right?
Yeah.
So how many of you people will be affected? No, I'm talking about east of the river, not west of the river. How many people will be affected?
Mainly the river.
On the three F?
You're talking about taking their homes, or it's affected because it's close to homes?
It's close, it's close to the home, or it, they'll take your home?
More east of the residential.
On the east side? Right. Okay. So that's, okay. Now, now on the west side, how many people will be affected on the three B? No? On the west side of the river, thirty-seven people will not be affected with the three B.
Except for, has the road right there.
Everybody in O'Brien will still be affected.
So, they're two separate.
Doesn't matter.
What I'm doing is, is suggesting that the three F on the east side, if there was a way that they could look at and see what I'm saying here?
Yeah. We, we asked them to look at that, um, engineer wise, they couldn't do it. For a chance to do it by words. Is everybody, everybody understand where, where we're at point, I think Eddie, look. Somebody else have one more question, I think, before Alderman Hall has. Yes?
My name's Kathy Dennehy, I live from O'Brien. I'm not, I'm not even sure where, where this bridge is supposed to go across the river. Where is it going to come across on Willows Road?
Um, we have a map here, we can show you more accurately, uh, where, how it comes across. It comes at an angle. I mean, easiest way to show you the map, I mean, the power lines, south of the power lines, and a little bit east of the power lines where, where it bobcat. And then this sort of goes straight across the more bobcats, and there's two homes there, it sort of goes right along there. That's a good question. The next step of the city council we take, and it'll be on the city council agenda Tuesday night, uh, to address, um, you know, the Iliana, three F, three B. So, they'll make some decisions that night, or no decision. And let the process continue, with just letter writing, making phone calls, or individually contacting IDOT. A couple, a couple ways. Um, YouTube, we have our city councils are, are videotaping. Come to council meetings, fun. Oh, yeah, it's, all, all mirrors, it's a curve. We love to have people on our meetings. I just can't read it. All right, council, back in your territory? Uh, council, if you guys have any, uh, questions?
One question, second one. Do you see? Bob Murphy here. Uh, I live in O'Brien subdivision, and I've been preparing this for an editorial for the paper. The title of it is boondoggle cutting through Wilmington. When people from Iliana proposed project mentions anything about it, they refer to it as being near Wilmington. In fact, it goes right through Wilmington, which will eventually destroy our city. The O'Brien subdivision plus other homes in this area are located in the northwest corner of Wilmington. That area will be separated from the rest of the city by the large and ugly four-lane tollway. There are thousands of people in Wilmington and all along the forty-seven mile route that will be adversely impacted by this boondoggle. It will cost much more than has been reported, which projects like this always do. The solution to this problem should be resolved, as in the past, by simply adding more lanes to the already existing roadway. Years ago, as more people from our area found employment in or near Chicago, the two-lane fifty, I-55 and I-80 were found to be insufficient. A three-lane was added to what was already there. No need to build another roadway. We should simply extend the third lane on I-55 from a little south of eighty, further south on one eight, uh, one fifty-five to the Cold City exit. Then extend I-80 from the New Lenox exit and Route thirty, west to the Menucha exit, thereby passing or connecting with I-55. That would leave both I-55 and I, uh, eighty with three lanes all the way. And if you've been, have driven south of Joliet, you know that the bridges, the four bridges south of Joliet are already, uh, three or four lanes wide, so it wouldn't be a problem with, with bridges. Right now, there are over one hundred homes in Wilmington up for sale. If Iliana becomes more of a reality, there will be many more people moving out of Wilmington. Property values will continue to decline. Iliana will destroy many acres of rich farmland. What difference will it make? For one, the proposed addition of one lane added I-55 and I-80 will require about forty-eight miles of paved road, while the Iliana will require forty-seven miles times four lanes, totaling a hundred and eighty-eight miles of paved road. That is almost four times the concrete needed for the Iliana, and that does not include the amount for entrance and exit ramps for the various exchanges as Routes fifty-five, fifty-three, fifty-seven, fifty, and so forth towards Indiana. In addition, and this is the best part, adding lanes to those two roads will destroy no homes, will take away zero number of acres of farmland, and will hold Wilmington as is with no depreciation of private property or health problems to humans or animals alike due to the spread of truck fumes or noise twenty-four seven. That's why most of us say no Iliana for us. Iliana is a boondoggle. My father used that word to describe a lot of government things, projects in the past. I didn't know when I came, when I was a kid, what it meant. But it means that a boondoggle is a trivial, useless, and wasteful project or activity. Please help us to be rid of this boondoggle. Thank you.
I'm Barb Litcham over from Foxtail County, and I, something that hasn't been addressed is the fact that not all of us, but many of us are senior citizens out there. Those homes are modified in many cases. The doorways are wider, they're modified for walkers, wheelchairs, things that we need. So it's not a matter of just moving and having it be something that'll fit our needs again. So I just wanted you to consider that situation.
Council, do you have any questions? Let's take them.
Well, in my situation, it's coming through my board and board for, and I wanna do what's best for constituents I work for, that I, where I live. I don't, I don't like seeing it come through an area that, we, we had suggestions back when this thing was being planned, like Tom said, why aren't we using, you know, part of the Iliana? We have the Iliana go through part of the, uh, the day one, but obviously, as most of you know, the streets have more rights than you do. And it's a shame, because of the fact of the matter is, you know, we're talking about an army ammunition plant, we're talking about, you know, what is truly a, a polluted site. I like the fact that the, the government's trying to clean up that piece of property, but doing a land swap for a small piece on the southern end of that property to move that highway would have been something that would have been to the benefit of this community. Would have gave them their road and would have affected none of us, and it's just a shame that our politicians, our federal politicians couldn't see fit to adjust that or modify that law to help us with the situation. Pieces of that property were acquired by organizations that have given to the, uh, the day one to add to the size of it, to keep us from being able to use the north perimeter of our community for such a thing as a pass-through road, which is another thing that I, I, I think is unfair to the community, and maybe a lot of you people sitting here aren't aware of. And unfortunately, we're stuck now with a, road builders trying to pick the easiest path, and they're gonna follow the power lines, they're gonna follow, they're following accesses that they know that they can get, and that, and, you know, unfortunately, it's cutting our community in half, and it's a, it's a shame that we can't look at an alternative that would fit everybody's needs to move that highway a little bit north. But being, that, that being said, I still wanna do what's best for our constituents in my community, and, and that's why I, I made it clear to you that, you know, the, the three B alternative puts it closer to our subdivision. If you, you know, the, the F moves it another hundred, a hundred or two hundred yards away from us, and that's, that's my input on this, so I, I would like to have your input also, so that I know which direction we can go. Whether or not, any comment that this committee makes to the tollway authority will have any say as to what they decide to do in the end, is, your guess is as good as mine. I would like to at least represent you the best I can and make the decision that is best for us with the car for a dollar.
Mr. President, any other thing to bring up?
Thanks, Alderman. Any other, Alderman? Well, I'd just like to say that from the beginning of this, uh, sitting on the council, it was supposed to be a, a good thing for, for the city of Wilmington. And it, from what we had seen, what I had seen from the beginning, and the mayor had also seen it, it looked like my granddaughter wrote with a box of Crayolas, a bunch of lines from one end to the other, and these were all the truck routes that they were gonna use. After that, it got down to the nitty-gritty, and, uh, the meetings at the one fifty local and at Peatone, uh, they, they showed us the last three that they would possibly take. Uh, one was gonna go through my, through Water's Edge, but they didn't know that there was the oil lines that were directly in back of my house, which was only about twenty-five feet past my property. So they had to make a decision on moving them, so that the road would not go over that or destroy any of that, uh, those pipelines. Moving ahead, then it was moved in the summer, uh, summer, Foxtail had their meeting, all of the I.D.O.T. people were there, and they gave them different scenarios again. And it just seemed to me that they just don't have a down pat as to what they actually wanna do, and they keep changing and giving us different answers every time. Uh, the, the council is, and the mayor and Tony have been with I.D.O.T., told me, we've been asking them numerously, what's the bottom line here, and we just don't get that final answer. So that's why we sent in that resolution for no build. Uh, the, uh, the council at that time said that, we just don't want it, it's not helping us, uh, we're not, uh, it's gonna destroy, destroy Wilmington actually, because we're gonna lose so many people and taxes, and, uh, it's not fair. Listening to all the people at Foxtail, as the one woman said, that they're all seniors out there? Yes, and that basically, that, that subdivision was about built there for the seniors, and a lot of them expressed to me that they have some place to go after it if they, if they do lose us. So, uh, on behalf of myself as the first board alderman and alderman person, we'll, we're willing to, what you want us to do, and that's the decision that we think we have to make then, uh, uh, elected vote on Tuesday next week.
Uh, one time, there was a question brought up that somebody wanted to build or bring me up about coming up with a railroad tracks right alongside, is that a dead issue?
That's pipe, yes.
Oh, anybody that hasn't been brought up anymore?
No, it's, yeah.
You never know, it's how this started.
I just wanted to say before we close, before we adjourn, uh, this is challenging for all of, all of the nine of us up there, very challenging. Uh, early on, when this whole thing started on, I can tell you right now, Wilmington has a truck problem. We do have a truck problem, we have anywhere from six hundred, eight hundred trucks that go through our town every day. We never had that, and for those of us that are out there that have been here for quite a while and have had kids, how many of us have been out there on tag days on those, that intersection to help respond for various organizations? We used to do it all the time, because what would we see? Maybe two or three trucks, and they were grain trucks. We expected those, they were the farmers that came through with the grain trucks, no big difference. It got to a point several years ago, it's so dangerous, we don't have tag days anymore because of the fear it will happen, could happen to people ever with the amount of trucks we have. It's been a very difficult challenge, and even early on when the Iliana was proposed, it, it looked like a good thing for the city of Wilmington, because we looked at what Will County had in their proposed route for a fifty-seven to fifty-five intersection for the past twenty years, which was utilizing the Peatone Road, New River Road, North River Road, whatever they wanna call it, um, access. And it was modified back in two thousand and five to actually go from Peatone Road to Old Chicago Road and down through. Um, as we found out through this whole process, um, like Alderman Studer mentioned earlier, uh, the day one goes gold out there, and it cannot be touched, which I can guarantee you, if everybody in this room, if we knew that it was utilizing that New River Road interchange, taking a thousand acres of that nineteen thousand they have out there, we wouldn't have issues, because we understand we have a truck problem and it needs to be addressed. Um, this is not how we wanted it to be addressed, and we have some difficult challenges ahead of us. But the one thing we've gotta make sure of is that we stay on top of those challenges as they're presented to us. And the one thing that, not only myself, but everybody here has been committed to, as these challenges are presented, we wanna make sure that the public knows as soon as we do. I can tell you that picture that you've seen in the paper, uh, Tuesday or Wednesday afternoon, we received that Tuesday from I.D.O.T., which was just kind of visual image on what three F would look like. That's been our commitment as this whole process goes on. We don't, a lot of times, we wanna make sure it's out there before we even have a time to decide, to digest it all, because it changes. And everybody knows it changes, it's been to those public hearings, it's been to everyone. It's going one way one time, it's going another way the other time, they can't answer the questions we ask. It's, it's a challenge. We're staying on top of those challenges, and we're gonna make sure everybody is aware of what we're doing. And as we come to next Tuesday, the council has a decision to make, whether they stay with what I.D.O.T., the course that I.D.O.T. has taken right now, um, whether they choose to utilize, to, to push for the three B route, uh, which, which takes more homes, uh, whether they choose to even make a public thing to say, hey, we want that three F route. That's gonna be the challenge before them, they're difficult choices that they have to make. And those, any decision that they make too, they could actually have absolutely no bearing on a decision that I.D.O.T. chooses. It's plain and simple, we could say three B, we could scream three B, we could stand up and jump up and down three B, but in the end of three, if they prefer three F and that's what they're gonna go for for the rest of their decision, that's what they're gonna do. It's I.D.O.T., it's the state of Wilmington, they're looking for what's the best interest of every party out there, and they, and Wilmington sometimes is, we're filled with gunna, I don't know how else to say it, it's a challenge. But we're always out there looking for the best of what we do, and regardless of what route they change, and, hey, it may never, the Iliana may not come, it's possible the Iliana could not come. There are challenges that they have to face. But even if the Iliana don't come, we still face serious challenges with trucks, because trucks are still here, trucks ain't going nowhere, Center Point's gonna get bigger, more trucks are gonna come. So we have challenges, we have to worry about that. You have people that live on fifty-three and one oh two that are impacted right now because of all those trucks, we're gonna have those trucks. So we gotta look at everything, but we gotta face every, we gotta look at every challenge that's out there, whether the Iliana's coming, whether the Iliana's not coming, and what route they choose. But we are committed, and I know these guys right here, they're committed to making sure that whatever challenges are faced, we're gonna stay on top of it, and we're gonna make sure the public knows about, is it change? We all know what change does, we've all been involved in change, it's worked in, in our daily lives, everybody's involved in change, whether it's good change or bad change, we don't know. Change is change, but we gotta make sure that we're on top of it, and we gotta make sure that any change will happen in the benefit of, good of the city for the future. And we're gonna stay on top of that, and I just want you guys to know that it's what we're here for, the only reason we're here for. We all live here, we work, we work here, um, we work close by, and it's what we're here for. But these guys are open to you guys listening to them. Everybody's number is published publicly, um, they're available either through city hall, um, the paper, they're probably in their little home pages and stuff like that. Uh, I know I put my numbers out there, email, emails are out there too, you go to the city's website, emails there, email, emailing, email us, let us know. And it don't have to just be about the Iliana, it could be about any issue you read about in the paper. Take the time, that's what we, that's what we're here for. We wanna make sure that we make the best decision, the best decision that we can. And sometimes we need you guys' help, we're not, we're not experts, so we always need to, we are fully public, we're not over here. So, I know, I know, Doug, we're gonna adjourn for now, okay? And if you wanna talk, if you want to say something.
Can I say one more thing about Medaun, because you, everybody touched on that a little bit, is, I've lived in the country my whole life, I love open lands. I, I want Medaun to stay there, but, and I want them to win their lawsuit, but I've never read anything, anywhere in the paper, if they're willing to go to bat for us, if they lose their lawsuit, they're federal, are they willing to go to bat for Wilmington? Or are they gonna throw us under the bus?
No. Uh, I, you know, if, if you meet with some of their public comments hard towards the Iliana and what they wanna do in this area, you would not be happy.
Not happy, you're right.
More unhappy, I'll be. Um, anyway, I want, especially you guys, I just, just, just really tugs at people's strings, I know it does, just glad to have you here. Even when we don't have big issues coming about on normal council meetings, on person third Tuesday, it's good to have you here then, too. It's good to know that we have people that are interested in, in, in what we're doing. Right? So what, this is.
I just, I just wanted to say that just because this says third ward or second ward, that, uh, you know, the third ward is not affected, but, uh, we're all here to listen to the city of Wilmington, so.
Well, so, thank you.
Just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, see you in a sec. I'll take the motion to adjourn, guys.
Second?
Second. All favor?
All right.
It's my turn.
Thank you, guys.